The city of Parksville recognizes the people of the Coast Salish Nations and their traditional territory upon which we gather with gratitude. I want to acknowledge the fact that we have three council members that are zooming in today. We have Councillor Beal, Councillor Wood, as well as Councillor Gore are all zooming from places away from Parksville. And we'll leave it at that, but welcome. If you could all give me a test on your microphone, Councillor Beal, go ahead first, please.
Hello, everyone. Happy to be here.
Thank you. That's good. Councillor Wood, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Welcome.
Thank you. Loud and clear. Councillor Gore, next to you, sir.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
It's working fine. That's great. Thank you, everybody. We'll move along now to the consent agenda. The minutes of the council meeting held July 7th, 2025, and also the approval of the council meeting agenda. Do I have a move or a second or further recommendation, please? Moved by Councillor Martin, seconded by Councillor Gore. Are there any airs, omissions, or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. That carries unanimous. Thank you. Reports. The first report on the agenda today is from the Director of Community Planning.
Point of order.
Sort it.
Sorry, we're moving into committee of the whole?
Yes, I did. I jumped. Sorry. I thought, what's that doing there? Okay, so slight adjustment to my earlier salutation. Welcome to the July 21st Committee of the Whole Meeting. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to move into committee of the whole?
Yes. Yes, if you could make a motion to go to Committee of the Whole, Councillor Grenz, seconded by Councillor Braz. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. My air, I jumped ahead of the game, but we can pick it up where we should be. We have one external presentation this afternoon from the Parksville Downtown Business Association regarding Imagine Parksville Downtown. A presentation by Teresa Cooper, and I don't see Tammy, but anyways, to provide an update on Imagine Parksville Downtown. This initiative led by the Parksville Downtown Business Association to gather insights and ideas from the community to shape the future of Parksville's downtown core over the next decade. Do we have Teresa? Are you coming up to the podium? Thank you. You've been here before. You know which buttons to push, right? There you go. Teresa, thank you for showing up today. We're very excited about this review, and I know council have already scanned it numerous times in draft and final form, and we're looking forward to your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council for giving us this opportunity to present a high-level overview of Imagine Parksville Downtown, as well as the commonalities we have found between our report and the Transportation Master Plan. Our president, Tammy Frankfurt, sends her regrets. She had a prior commitment that she wasn't able to reschedule, but of course, she's very supportive and is certainly with us in spirit today. I do have Candy Hallstrom, who is our treasurer here today, as well as being our treasurer. She's also on the Parksville, Imagine Parksville Downtown Steering Committee, along with Michelle Jones, who is here, and your Director of Planning, Blaine Russell. Here's a quick look at the agenda for today's presentation. I'm going to walk you through the background and the process behind Imagine Parksville Downtown, highlight key findings, and share the core strategies that emerged from the community engagement and research that was gathered by our consultant. As you can see, we've also made sure to leave time at the end for any questions or discussions you may have. Before we dive in, I just want to clarify that the information I'll be presenting today comes directly from the Imagine Parksville Downtown Report. Our steering committee has not yet finalized priorities or next steps. So any project examples shared today are simply to help illustrate a particular finding, concept, or idea. The current situation for downtown or for Parksville Downtown, this slide provides some broader context that council will already be familiar with, but it's helpful to include for anyone else who may be here today. According to B.C. Stats, Parksville is projected to grow by about 4,000 people over the next 20 years, which would bring our population close to 20,000. This growth is expected to be concentrated among older age groups, which aligns with our already aging demographic. At the same time, we've seen some concerning shifts in community sentiment and economic resilience. Between 2023 and 2024, Parksville fell from third place overall to 21st in the B.C. Business Economic Resiliency Survey. As well, our residents' reported sense of belonging dropped significantly from ninth place to 22nd place. These trends highlight the importance of thinking proactively about the future of our downtown. A welcoming and vibrant downtown plays a vital role in fostering a strong sense of belonging for residents and creating the conditions that help local businesses thrive and remain resilient. Ensuring that this report truly reflected the thoughts, beliefs, and needs of our community was incredibly important to us. We made a strong effort to connect with a wide range of individuals and organizations, some of which are here today, thank you very much, including members of council and senior staff, residents, business leaders, property developers, and building owners. We also reached out to the arts community, members of Parksville Museum Society, PQB Tourism Association, Access Oceanside, and members of the LGBTQ+ community to make sure a broad spectrum of perspectives were included. This engagement took many forms. A business survey, public workshops, targeted focus groups, one-on-one interviews, and an open house. Altogether, we held close to 200 individual conversations. The result is a report that is rooted in community voice and shaped by a wide variety of lived experiences and local insight. And now we get the report. When we asked people what they loved about Parksville Downtown, a few clear themes came through. First, there's a strong sense of pride and community. People genuinely care about Parksville, and with our beautiful setting right by the beach, it's easy to see why. Second, we heard appreciation for the solid foundation of small businesses and our strong tourism appeal. Even with room to grow, there's a great base to build on. And finally, the friendliness and laid-back lifestyle of Parksville Downtown came up again and again. It's part of what makes this community so special and welcoming to both residents and visitors. Alongside the strengths, we also heard clearly about the challenges facing Parksville Downtown. Many of our buildings and infrastructure are over 50 years old, and that age is showing. The downtown feels tired to many. There's a noticeable lack of public space, placemaking, or visual appeal that invites people in. We also heard concerns about our seasonal economy. While we see a strong summer push, there's very little to keep people downtown in the evenings or during the rest of the year. Another key theme was the lack of a clear identity, something that sets us apart as a destination. Add to that physical barriers like Highway 19A, limited parking, and inconsistent signage and wayfinding, and it becomes harder for people to move easily through the area. And finally, we can't ignore the reality that change can be hard. Some property owners are understandably cautious, and there's a level of resistance that has to be addressed with care and collaboration. Despite this caution towards something different, through this process, we also heard a strong desire for change and a clear vision of what Parksville Downtown could be. People want to see more diverse and modern shops, restaurants, and gathering spaces, places that meet the needs of both locals and visitors all year round. They also want a downtown that's truly walkable, beautiful, and feels like the heart of the community. That means welcoming public spaces, inviting storefronts, and a layout that encourages people to linger and connect. Inclusivity was another key theme. Spaces that reflect the diversity of Parksville today and where we're headed in the future. There's also a call for more nightlife, more events, and more spaces designed with young people and families in mind. And many want to see more public art, stronger storytelling, and a better connection between downtown and our incredible waterfront. Above all, people are asking for an identity that's distinctly Parksville, something vibrant, welcoming, and maybe even a little whimsical. From all of our conversations, input and ideas we've gathered, this is the vision that begins to emerge, a future that builds on our strengths and addresses our challenges in meaningful ways. We aspire to become a welcoming, year-round destination, a place where both residents and visitors can come together to shop, dine, connect, and celebrate community. We imagine a downtown that's colorful and vibrant, with public spaces that are thoughtfully designed to reflect and enhance the character of our downtown streets. We see the potential for a pedestrian and cycling-friendly Oceanside Boulevard, a transformation of Highway 19A to a signature space that invites people to explore, enjoy, and experience Parksville Downtown at its best. And at the heart of all of it, we want to foster a strong sense of community, reflected in revitalized facades and signage that celebrate the unique identity and spirit of Parksville Downtown. The Imagine Parksville Downtown Report outlines five core strategies to guide future revitalization efforts. Each strategy includes a range of potential tactics, many of which were inspired by community input and best practices from other communities. On the following slides, we're sharing a small example of these tactics, just three or four for each strategy. These examples aren't decisions or commitments. They're simply meant to give you a sense of the flavor and direction each strategy could take. As I mentioned earlier, our steering committee hasn't yet determined which tactics to prioritize. That work is still ahead of us. But this will give you a window into the kinds of ideas we're starting to explore. The first strategy focuses on reimagining our public spaces, making them more vibrant, welcoming, and people-focused. We fully recognize that public spaces are the purview of the city, and any changes to their use would require leadership and direction from council. That said, it's our hope that there may be an appetite to explore these ideas together. One idea we're exploring is Pilot Pedestrian Only Zone. Zones, sorry. Let me say that again. Pilot pedestrian-only zones. A temporary low-risk pilot would give the community a chance to experience the benefits of a more people-focused downtown, like increased foot traffic, stronger local spending, and a great sense of place, while providing a real-world test before considering any permanent changes. Another exciting idea is the creation of an arts district. By collaborating with local artists and art organizations, we can transform Parksville Downtown into a cultural hub. This could help support create businesses, draw visitors year-round, and bring a strong sense of energy and identity to downtown. And finally, the idea of a permanent farmer's market. This would provide a consistent year-round destination that supports local growers and makers, attracts visitors and residents alike, and reinforces that sense of community connection that people really want in Parksville Downtown. This slide is taken directly from the Imagine Parksville Downtown Report, and it offers a visual concept of what three areas of our downtown could look like if explored as a pedestrian-only zone. On the top is Craig Street. You can see the current photos on the right, and then what the consultant imagined on the left. So we have Craig Street, Morrison Street, next to the Town Clock Plaza, and Memorial Plaza. Again, these ideas are meant to spark imagination and conversation. They're not proposals at this stage, but simply a way to visualize how public spaces could be reimagined to support a more walkable, vibrant, and community-oriented downtown. Here are a few example tactics that reflect the spirit of a stronger downtown business ecosystem and the kinds of ideas we're beginning to explore. First, we could launch a facade rejuvenation program. A coordinated effort to improve storefronts can dramatically enhance the visual identity of downtown. It also boosts business confidence, builds community pride, and sends a clear message that Parksville Downtown is a vibrant, thriving place to invest and grow. To illustrate the kind of transformation this could inspire, we've used AI to visualize a refreshed version of the Mason's Building on Alberni Highway. Secondly, we heard strong interest in attracting and securing key anchor businesses, the kind of destination spots like a restaurant or a brewery that help define a downtown and drive steady foot traffic. These anchors support surrounding businesses and bring people downtown more often and for longer stays. And finally, there's real potential to develop a signature downtown experience or attraction, something unique to Parksville that becomes a recognizable draw. An example of this could be something whimsical, like an outdoor giant xylophone, or something more traditional, like a Mount Aerosmith Biosphere Discovery Center. Whether it's an event, a space, or an interactive experience, it would help enhance our identity, support local business, and give both residents and visitors a reason to keep coming back. This strategy is about creating a more cohesive, memorable, and emotionally resonant identity for Parksville Downtown, something that reflects who we are and inspires pride in both residents and visitors. First, we could strengthen our branding guidelines. A refreshed, unified visual identity can go a long way in creating a stronger emotional connection with the community while also encouraging repeat visitation and investment. We could also enhance our wayfinding signage to better reflect this new identity. Updating signage with a consistent, engaging style not only helps people navigate more easily, it also reinforces the look and feel of Parksville Downtown as a vibrant and welcoming destination. And finally, there's a great opportunity to align and influence the city's upcoming downtown lighting plan with our emerging identity. Lighting plays a big role in creating ambiance, and by coordinating these improvements with our branding efforts, we can create a more cohesive and inviting downtown experience day and night. This strategy emphasizes the importance of collaboration, leadership, and community pride in driving revitalization forward. One idea is to establish a downtown revitalization advisory group. This group could include representatives from Parksville Downtown, the city, OCAC, and the broader community. Its role would be to gather input, help guide implementation, and maintain momentum as we move from vision to action. We also see an opportunity to launch a mentorship program for young entrepreneurs. Supporting the next generation of business owners not only encourages innovation and business creation, it also helps with long-term succession planning and sustainability for our downtown. And finally, supporting individual business beautification projects will be important. Even small improvements, when done collectively, can significantly enhance the downtown's character, boost curb appeal, and inspire pride and investment through the community. As part of this presentation, we've been invited to highlight the areas where the Imagine Parksville Downtown Project and the city's recently released Transportation Master Plan have common goals. We've highlighted four tactics from the Imagine Parksville Downtown Report that directly align with the city's Transportation Master Plan. We've chosen to go into more detail on each one as they represent meaningful opportunities for collaboration between the city and Parksville Downtown. During our conversation with the community, we consistently heard that Highway 19A feels noisy, difficult to cross, and physically intimidating, especially for those on foot. Narrow, uninviting sidewalks only add to the challenge, and if I may speak personally, I wouldn't even try to ride my bike along it. The Transportation Master Plan echoes these concerns, identifying Highway 19A as a key barrier to downtown connectivity. The plan acknowledges the need to strike a better balance between mobility and placemaking and recommends a dedicated corridor study along with the potential traffic calming solutions. It's encouraging to see strong alignment between community feedback and the Transportation Master Plan. While the issue is well-understood, the real work lies in finding shared solutions. With collaboration and creativity, we believe Parksville can reimagine Highway 19A in a way that supports both vibrancy and connection. Both the Imagine Parksville Downtown Report and the Transportation Master Plan acknowledge that parking and traffic flow are sensitive and complex issues that need to be addressed thoughtfully and collaboratively. There's a shared understanding that any long-term solutions should be grounded in data, community consultation, and where possible, temporary pilot projects to test ideas before making permanent changes. The Transportation Master Plan commits to a downtown parking utilization study, includes circulation and traffic flow studies as future actions, and emphasizes the importance of balancing vehicular access with pedestrian-friendly design. From the Imagine Parksville Downtown perspective, we recognize the divide in community opinion on parking needs and priorities. We've suggested a parking review to assess more than just a parking space inventory, but parking needs, best locations, and traffic flow in the downtown core. We've emphasized that while parking is important, it should not dominate public space at the expense of vibrancy, walkability, and a welcoming downtown experience. This is clearly a shared area of interest and one that will benefit from ongoing dialogue and coordination between the city and the community. Connectivity isn't just about getting from point A to point B. It's also about creating a stronger sense of place and encouraging people to spend more time exploring and engaging with their community. Both the Imagine Parksville Downtown Plan and the Transportation Master Plan recognize that physical connectivity is essential to the health and vibrancy of downtown. From the Transportation Master Plan, we see an emphasis on better pedestrian and active transportation linkages, connecting neighborhoods to key civic assets. There's also a clear focus on improving connections to parks, the waterfront, and the downtown core. Imagine Parksville Downtown echoes this vision. We've emphasized the need to strengthen connections between downtown, the community park, and the waterfront, improve wayfinding and signage so it's easier for people to navigate the area, and enhance walking and cycling infrastructure to support both locals and visitors in moving easily and safely through downtown. As a final point of alignment, we wanted to highlight the opportunity to work together on something that truly defines the spirit of Parksville, placemaking and identity. While the Transportation Master Plan is more infrastructure-driven, it indirectly supports the goals of placemaking by prioritizing streets that work for people, not just cars. The Transportation Master Plan engagement results emphasize the importance of downtown vibrancy, character, and cohesion. Investments in walkability, street design, and the public realm all support placemaking, creating streets and spaces where people want to be. Meanwhile, Imagine Parksville Downtown focuses more directly on placemaking, beautification, public art, wayfinding, and storytelling, all aimed at building a unique and welcoming identity. And as I mentioned, we also propose an arts district as a cultural and economic driver alongside projects like murals and activated public spaces. Before I close, I'd like to take you on a short placemaking journey, one that happened right here in Parksville Downtown. It was three years ago this month that the city cut the ribbon for the opening of Memorial Plaza. I wasn't there for this event, but I can see by the faces there was a lot of joy and pride in this wonderful public space. When I moved to Parksville six months later, there was still a buzz in the air, but sadly, it wasn't the excitement and joy that was at the grand opening. What I heard instead from residents and businesses was a mix of frustration, fear, and disappointment, a sense that Memorial Plaza wasn't living up to its potential. There's a well-known placemaking quote that says, "Good public places are characterized by the presence of people who have no pressing reason to stay." Unfortunately, that turned out to be all too true for Memorial Plaza, but not in a positive way. But thankfully, with the support of my board and the support of the city, we took on the challenge of creating a better sense of place in Memorial Plaza. In the summer of 2023, we partnered with the city to launch the Dance With Me on Memorial event, which continues today. And Parksville Downtown began experimenting with small pilot projects, events, and programming that gave both residents and visitors a reason to come and a reason to stay. It hasn't always been easy, but this summer, it really feels like we've turned a corner. According to the organization, placemaking projects for public spaces, places thrive when users have a range of reasons, ten or more, to be there. Memorial Plaza is truly becoming a place. From Monday to Friday, people find a place where they can come to find other people, a place to meet, talk, sit, relax, play, eat, read, and make memories. If you were to visit Memorial Plaza tomorrow afternoon, you might see someone eating their lunch, listening to music, another reading a book, kids playing catch with a grandparent, two couples playing cards, someone creating chalk art, et cetera. Every day, it's something different. So on a personal note, I want to thank the city for your faith and trust in us, for giving us the space and support to try to adapt, and ultimately, to truly give Memorial Plaza a strong sense of place. This is an area where we believe the city of Parksville- This is an area where we believe the city of Parksville and Parksville Downtown can come together to do something truly special. By aligning our efforts, we can create more places that people love, places that reflect our character, invite connection, and inspire pride in our community. On behalf of the Parksville Downtown Business Association, I want to sincerely thank the city for your interest in the Imagine Parksville Downtown Project and for giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts on the Transportation Master Plan. What we presented today reflects the voices of our residents, businesses, artists, and community members who care deeply about the future of Parksville Downtown. The strategies outlined in Imagine Parksville Downtown are ambitious, but they are grounded in possibility, and most importantly, they are grounded in the identity and aspirations of this community. We strongly believe in the power of public space, local business, and creative placemaking to bring life and vibrancy back to the heart of our city. And we know that the best path forward is through continued collaboration with the city of Parksville. There is so much potential here, and with shared vision, open dialogue, and collective action, we truly believe we can create a downtown that is welcoming, inclusive, and full of energy year-round. Thank you again for your time, and thank you for your partnership. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Teresa. Well done. Just, well, let's freshen my mind. The presentation that you've basically condensed the Parksville Imagine Report will be forwarded on to our staff anyway, so that it can be forwarded into our council emails and so forth to provide some very, um, looking forward to summer reading for our council, because as you know, this is our last council meeting before we take our summer break. So this is perfect for reading on the beach.
Well, I'm happy to provide that for you.
Yeah, it's great. So this is committed to the whole, folks. And so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to let council have a couple of initial questions or comments to Teresa while she's at the podium here, and then I'm going to open it up to the floor for those in our audience that wish to come forth to the podium. Do you want to take questions from the audience, or would you rather just take questions from council this time, Teresa? Your choice.
I'll leave that up to you.
Okay, well, okay, let's do, while you're here at the podium, I will then take questions and comments from council, and then after that, we'll let you leave the podium, and then other visitors to the forum today can come up to your spot there and actually just advise council their comments.
Sure.
Thank you. So council, it's open now for your comments and questions while Teresa's here at the podium. Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Teresa, for all your efforts. This is, I'm the liaison, as you know, for this PDBA. And I know in your hearts, all of you, really want to make some special thing here in Parksville. But you have helped initiate this with the grants and everything you've had. And this is excellent for us to have for groundwork to work towards. It's a guide, a pathway, a plan, and thank you for your efforts. It's been excellent. Thank you.
It's been my pleasure.
Yeah.
And Counselor Gore, go ahead, sir.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Teresa. First of all, I want to start with my thanks to you, the volunteers with PDBA. Wonderful presentation. I think anybody who's watched your presentation, if you talk to members of public, I think everybody would be quite interested in all your initiatives that you're proposing. I am, my favorite, again, all three that you said about pedestrian-friendly streets, the arts district, and year-round farmer's market. Well, I'm speaking for myself, I'm sold on all those three initiatives. They're amazing. My question to you is, you presented a couple of statistics at the start of your presentation, not very positive ones, with the slip in the economic resiliency of Parksville, and the second with the sense of belonging, I think that was, if I'm paraphrasing it, that's what it was. Are you aware what factors were taken into account for those measures? Like, why did Parksville slip from a number three resiliency to a, what, twenty-fourth or twenty-first that you mentioned? And also the sense of belonging among the residents? What was, what were the reasons? Are you aware?
Go ahead, Teresa.
Thank you, Counselor Gore. I don't have it right here in front of me, but I would be happy to pull that information and send it to council.
Follow-up, Counselor Gore?
I do have other questions, but I can wait for the second round, Mr. Mayor. But if you want, I can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Any other first-time speakers, please? Counselor Beal, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through to our delegation, hello, Teresa. Thank you very much for sharing the report. I appreciate that you've stressed a number of times, it's very high level. It's not, you know, it doesn't indicate priorities at this time. But I did want to thank you and the Parksville Downtown for the inclusion of the Arts Council, the Access Oceanside, the Tourism Association, the Historical Heritage Association. I really appreciated seeing the range of groups that you have thought to include, very consciously thought to include in this as well as it being open to the larger community. So hats off to you for that. And also, I also really wanted to thank you for the links and the comparison and the connection to the Transportation Master Plan findings. And again, those are relatively high level. They do have specific recommendations, but it's not something where we have chosen priorities with the engineering department. And of course, as you know, that is the second item on our committee at the whole. So again, I just wanted to thank you for looking at where there could be, you know, synergy and in fact, work together in areas that work for both the Transportation Master Plan ideas and also downtown. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beal. Anyone else? Counselor Fraz, go ahead, sir.
Thank you through our mayor, through our delegation. I appreciate everything you guys put together today. It was really nice, especially seeing the images. I like the AI modeling of the new facades and what it can look like with the nice lighting and overheads for walkable areas. A question I have, as you mentioned, about parking being a desire, having increased parking, but at the same time, having more pedestrian-only spaces. And it seems like those pedestrian-only spaces come at the expense of parking spaces as well. So where's the balance on how much are people wanting to walk and how close are they wanting to park? Because we do actually have, you know, lots of parking spaces down by the Curling Arena. You'd have to walk into town, though. We see during places, times like Canada Day, you know, our town gets flooded in with people from all over the island in a parking all throughout the city and having to walk into the core. So I guess it's around that walkable sense of it. What does that look like for not just the pedestrian spaces, but when people want to have a walkable community? How far are they wanting to walk and how far away are they willing to park?
I agree, Counselor Fraz, that there's a lot of questions there still. But it was interesting for us doing the, during the conversations, when we talked to the businesses, they were adamant that more parking was required. And so from their perspective, you know, parking is prime. However, many of the residents that we spoke to said, "Well, parking's fine. I can get a spot when I need it." So again, there's a balance there, as you said. And I think that the two studies that were identified in the Transportation Master Plan should help us nail down some of those questions or answers to those questions. Unfortunately, I don't have them.
Follow-up, Counselor Fraz?
Yeah, fair enough. I think they're just important things to contemplate because like we'll see later today, when we look at patio spaces extending on the street, they come at the expense of parking spots. So for me, it's about knowing where the priority really is and how valuable is that parking spot? Because I can appreciate that when I go to their communities and see the, you know, walkability of streets and that, and how they build those downtown cores. It is very inviting, but yeah, if our parking is a priority, then it weighs against it.
Thank you. Counselor Grant, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to our delegation. Teresa, thank you so much to you and the rest of the team there, PDBA. I very much appreciate the energy and creativity you bring to the role. So thank you for all you do in the community. Really exciting ideas in this report. I guess my question is, what do you see as being the next steps on this? Is it to establish an advisory committee, or where does this go to next?
We still have our steering committee in place, and our thoughts are to leave it in place until we dig into and prioritize what 2026 is going to look like. That steering committee has the background, has the knowledge. From my perspective, anybody who wanted to remain on a community rejuvenation committee, I would think many of them would want to stay and see the project further. But again, we haven't really set what that looks like yet. I'm trying to leave those decisions up to our steering committee.
Maybe a follow-up is not really a follow-up, it's another item. Just a little bit of thoughts on kind of the next steps from my perspective. I think the report identifies a lot of potential problems that we want to address. But I think the next step will be to really hone in on what measurable improvements can be delivered. I'm sure you're already on that track, but and when the thinking on that happens, there are different considerations to look at when it comes to, say, placemaking and having some kind of anchor, this or that. Some of those things pertain more to tourism or attracting people into the downtown for tourism, kind of more for business and tourism reasons, which is a slightly different thing than going for what our strategic plan on council calls for as a vibrant and livable downtown. So I think that's something to consider is, are we working towards trying to attract more people that are coming for as visitors, or are we trying to attract more or create more of a livable downtown where people just like to be there day-to-day, year-round, live there, shop there, walk around, raise their families, that kind of thing? So I think that's a really important question to really address at the very early stages of the next phase of this. I personally feel like if we really look at livability as a guiding goal as opposed to some kind of big attraction, people will still want to be here for, as tourists as well, like if we still check that box. But if we have some big, you know, showpiece that attracts a lot of people here for tourist reasons, it doesn't actually enhance the livability necessarily, unless through sort of secondary offshoots that, you know, now more businesses can establish themselves here because there's more tourism, that kind of thing. But it's not as direct a line, if you get where I'm going with it. So that would be kind of my feedback on how to, like, what kind of questions to look at at the next phase and where we can really dovetail with what we're trying to do from the council kind of perspective. If that makes sense.
I think you're absolutely right, Counselor Gore, Counselor Grant. When we started this, it was all about the residents. We had to, we had to look at the people who live here on a, you know, and visit downtown on a daily basis, had to be based on what they wanted. And I would say about three-quarters of the way through, I realized that we can't stick our heads in the sand and not talk about the tourists. So it was finding, again, finding that balance that you referred to. But absolutely, the people in this community come first.
Go ahead, Counselor Wood.
Thank you, Mayor, through yourself to the delegation. Teresa, thank you so much for the work that you've personally put into this. Thank you for the Downtown Business Association work you put into this. I look forward to next steps, timelines, prioritization, and in some cases, trade-offs, as Counselor Fraz was mentioning, you know, walkability versus maybe parking. You know, Counselor Grant also spoke to, you know, any trade-offs for attracting tourists, but also keeping it livable. So I really appreciate all the work you put into it, and I'll keep my comments short. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Wood. My turn, before we go into second round, if I may. I was blown away by the thoroughness of your consultant. I really was, and I was inspired by it as well. I'm very impressed. I've dealt with him before with the Tourism Association, and I knew what to expect and definitely delivered. In this particular thing, what I'm particularly excited about is the consultant is working on creating an identity. And I think that's so important. And it's, the theme is revolving around a seaside town. We're seaside town. Let's focus on that. That's not just in the summer for tourists, that's twelve months out of the year. And I think that's very important that he's done that. And then, when he brings forth his comments, and I just, I was, I was just, fell off my chair when I read this. Page 25, describing Parksville, "Where coastal comforts come alive." I love that. It's just lends to, so that just speaks to the very heart of Parksville. Creating the identity here. On page 26, in the heart of Parksville, "Where the coast calms and the community gathers." There we go. Page 27, "Tides of energy and comfort." Wow. This is a place not only do I want to visit, I want to live here. I want to thrive here, and we can because of our coalition with nature here. So your consultant identifies that. And so I think that these slogans pay, play a very good part of attracting visitors as well as residents to live here. I think it's very important. I think it should be part, these slogans should be part of your placemaking strategy, the signage entering our city, to let people get the feel of exactly what we enjoy here in Parksville and what we hope to encourage and how we want to encourage people, especially doctors, to come and live here. Just saying, it'd be, and they are looking, I can tell you right now. So I was very impressed with that, and I want to continue on with that theme of the seaside town concept. I loved it, Counselor Fraz, that, your AI on the building next door to you in the Maison. Wow, you know, that was just blown away. What we can do now, you know, what can happen? How do we get to yes? That makes it a lot easier. This is what it looks like. So I'm very impressed with that. So I'm impressed with the whole Imagine Downtown concept. You mentioned earlier in your comments about dropping down on the economic resiliency in the British Columbia map. And a comment that maybe I've made before, but in Parksville, unfortunately, this is all about downtown. Many of our businesses are not open hours that are suitable to create a place to be. Even when you mentioned Memorial Plaza, you said from Monday to Friday, we have an enormous amount of events that happen to attract people downtown and make it better. What about Saturday and Sunday? We're living in a world now where businesses in very successful cities and towns and places are open seven days a week. They're open longer hours and so forth. But I can't say the same for Parksville, I have to say. I drove into town today, and I was going to drop into one of my coffee shops, and it's Monday, and it was like 10 o'clock, and it's closed. I couldn't read the sign because I was driving by, and I just shook my head, and I went, "I'm sorry." And then unfortunately, I went to where I knew a coffee shop was open, but it was outside of the downtown. And so I need my coffee, so I don't need a closed sign. So in order for all the densification that we have for downtown, that you see we have a little bit of development going on here. These people are here Saturdays and Sundays as well. They're looking for a place to go grab a bite, take advantage of these new street patios that we have and so forth. But they're also looking to do some shopping while they're here because a lot of them are still working. A lot of them that are moving into our downtown core, our densified buildings, work in Nanaimo or Port, but they live in Parksville. So then they come home for weekends, and it's like, wow, they can- So then they come home for weekends and it's like, wow, they can't use their own town to, you know, spend their money in because it's closed. And it's just unfortunate. So just just a comment, I think we have to start that 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 movement going to making sure that our new residents and our visitors can expect the store to be open and not go to a closed sign or, you know, like we take two days off, like Sunday, Monday, we always take Sunday, Monday. Well, that's nice, but that doesn't contribute to our economic resiliency because it's repeat business that you want for your your stores. You have a lot of great stores, but you need to get that repeat business. Repeat business means being dependable and reliable for when we need to spend our money. So it's just a comment, I know you struggle with that with some businesses and so forth that are from the 60s, I guess, is when we used to all close on Sundays, but we're not there anymore. So just just a comment, I think that would be helpful to address our economic resiliency. Other than that, I'm I'm blown away by the whole thing. I'm looking forward to working on this and getting further comments from council through the summer because this is our assignment, folks. But when we come back together in the fall for our financing and workload meetings, you know, we're going to bring this together. I caution you, you mentioned, you know, we're looking for a parking study, we're looking for another study, we're looking for that. That's okay, but let's not just have more studies. You've given us a lot here, so let's make have some action plans on a lot of your excellent suggestions that are in this. Let's move forward to this. And then, yes, we can, the parking and, you know, we'll work on that as well. But let's not lose the momentum that you've got going here because you've created a huge snowball of momentum, not a good analogy on a day like today. Thank you, Teresa. Any comments on that? Sorry.
I just want to thank you for your comments. They are all comments that we've talked about around the table and I share your frustration, to be honest. There are some steps we can take regarding Memorial Plaza, trying to extend the appearance of something happening there all the time. It's going to take a little bit of help and a little bit of effort, but I think that that that, to me, is a top priority to find a way to make that. Doesn't matter when you come, something is there.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'm just going to be a little observant here. I just saw Maureen leave. Maureen, do you have to go? I'm sorry, because I didn't get a chance for you to. Come on and roll back in, I know you can. Are you leaving? Do you want to speak right now? Can you? Yeah, if I may, sorry, because I would have, yeah, sorry, Maureen, go ahead. I know that you had some comments and this is committee of the whole. I've noticed that.
I'm here with the Access Oceanside, thank you, Association, and we're actually here regarding the master transportation plan. But just before I came in, I was talking to the mayor and I was saying, I live right on the corner of 19A and Macmillan. And as you're driving to that intersection from, say, Wembley Mall, the speed limit for the cars goes from 50 kilometers an hour to 60 kilometers an hour, back to 70 kilometers an hour. And they're on a highway. If you're on a highway, you go faster. If you're on the Alberni Highway, it's a highway, you just tend to go faster. So my suggestion might be that we also look at reducing the speed along 19A and along Alberni Highway so that they are friendlier for pedestrians and those in mobility chairs and scooters, that you're not blown off the road as you go by. Because if I'm driving down Alberni Highway on the side and a big truck goes through, I'm like this all the way down the road and the same on 19A. So I think reducing the speed limit along those highways and making them not highways, making them roads or whatever you want to call them, streets, roads, taking away the highway designation may just slow down people anyway. So we can't, we can't do it much with Highway 19A, which is running right through the middle of our our town, but I think that we need to develop more beach friendly access to the beach. I don't know, maybe maybe a fiticular down that hill so that you can get down to the beach easier. But there we have to look at making the getting to the beach easier and more important. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Maureen. Yeah, thank you. And I apologize for not getting to you earlier. Yeah, 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 okay, yeah, don't don't be late for your appointment. Thanks again. And staff, we did make note of your comments that you made as well, Maureen, so we have your comments on record now. Thank you. Looking forward to it. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Teresa, I just saw Maureen was leaving there. Had you finished your comments, your replies? Thank you. See, for the second time around, we're going to go to councillor Martin and then councillor Fraz. Councillor Martin, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Teresa. For a business plan, it's very smart and they've mentioned it here to really make it for all year round, all year round. It's very important, not seasonal. You can attract locals to do what they do and spend their money here. So we can, from my perspective, emphasize that somehow, whatever is decided, but that's a must for Parksville. Thank you.
You, councillor Fraz, go ahead, sir.
Thank you through the mayor to Teresa. Couple of comments here. One, you mentioned wayfinding in the slides there. Couple of years ago back, there was a big wayfinding project that went underway. So what kind of gaps were missed that people are concerned that they're not having adequate wayfinding?
The feedback that I've received is that the welcome to Parksville downtown is not significant enough, that there should be a, you know, you get to that, and maybe it's not just signage and wayfinding, but you get to a certain point and all of a sudden you know you're in downtown. How do we do that? Some of it's signage, but what else could we do? Better facades, better directions, more interesting, like, this is no disrespect to the project that was done only a few years ago, but I've been in other downtowns where even the even the signage fits in with the with the rest of the artwork and the and the colors and the murals. So I think it just take it up a notch from where we're at. Don't do anything with what's there, but let's build on, let's build on that success and go a little further.
Another one too, I remember years back as well, there was shuttles that were operating from Resort Drive to downtown. What came about that? I don't recall who's operating it, but I think it might have been the PDBA. Was that successful as far as improving the walkability so that people could, you know, access places like perhaps the lovely museum grounds there to Memorial Plaza and connect to the resorts? Was that successful? And I didn't see any mention of it in the presentation, so I'm wondering why.
I wasn't here, so what I'm about to say is only pieces of what I've heard. It was meant to run from Resort Drive to the beach and then into downtown and sort of do that circle. I don't think the ridership was where they had hoped it would be and it was very expensive. At the end of the day, and Michelle can probably correct me if I've remembered this incorrectly, that at the end of, by the end of the summer, the only people using it were people going to work out at the resorts and then coming back home, which is great, but it wasn't the purpose of it. Just let me check with her.
Sort of. The ridership was very low. And the intent was to bring people from resorts to the downtown. The beach was secondary. We wanted to bring downtown first and then the beach and then men from the beach downtown back to resorts, that's the purpose. It was probably almost, I'm going to say 40% of our budget for a year to run it for two months. So it was very expensive and the ridership, yeah, we got less than, I'm going to say 60 people a day. So it wasn't, it wasn't feasible. We did it for three years. But it just, it never, people never got on it. Didn't pay for it.
Yeah, fair enough. I guess if it's, yeah, maybe not, just not the right time for it yet, not quite big enough or or enough demand. I mean, one more comment then too. And just in regards to kind of being the summertime, you know, I mentioned that in the winter, there's not as much activity and the town kind of slows right down. Does any of the signage, the street signs and things like that, is that affecting of it as far as like the illumination and the, you know, the colors or the, you know, what kind of like winter envisioning? Do you, is there anything put into those kind of thoughts of on our off season? What can be done to improve it?
A lot. I have a lot of thoughts about that. But I'll keep it short. I think that the lighting that the bit of lighting that's on Alberni and on Memorial Plaza really impacts that area. So I think there's no reason why we couldn't spread it through the rest of the downtown. It makes you feel safe with that much light. I try to walk my dog when it's dark so that I so that I can see if it's having the impact it should. And and I know where I feel safe and I know where I don't feel safe. So I think that the lighting, yes. I've been told, again, this is anecdotally, that the feedback on the color of the street signs is that they are hard to see in in dim light, so that would be wintertime. So I do think there are physical changes we could make, but again, it goes back to what the mayor said, that if we don't have the people downtown, it it doesn't feel like a place to go. So how do we get more people into downtown past 5:00 at night? So that 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 is a lot about what's in this report. You know, how do we find new businesses? How do we work with our businesses to stay open? It's a chicken and egg thing, you know? These businesses won't stay open because nobody comes. Well, nobody goes because they think they're closed. So we've got a lot of work to do there.
Thank you.
Okay, I can make a comment just to yourself here.
Go ahead, sir.
Committee of the whole.
Go ahead.
Recently, I was in a community in Lower Mainland where they had illuminated their street signs at the intersections. And it it really stood out to me for a couple of reasons. One, like it made the readability of knowing where you are, you know, just tremendously easy. The security and safety of the street for the drivers and pedestrians may feel like you're in a spot where they're, you know, and they're going to light up the signs and it just, it made it feel like it was more alive to it too. So I thought it was a really neat idea. I hadn't really seen other places as well. So just to kind of mention it as something that kind of adds a little bit of vibrancy. It's not all just decorative lighting, but it's useful lighting that can happen as well. So that's why I wanted to ask about that. I do agree that the colors that we have now, while they're, you know, beautiful colors, I've noticed times when I'm walking down the street and actually just by the post office, big trees in full bloom, well, they camouflage the street signs pretty well, so they can make it very challenging to see. So but anyways, those are just some thoughts, ideas that
And that's a good idea, councillor Fraz, and I would encourage you to maybe reach out to our staff and let them know what city or town that was that has them. And our staff can just look at, you know, what the illumination, where they secure them from, where they purchase them and what that would look like here. We have pretty good contacts with everybody. There was a B C town, wasn't it? Yeah, that's great. If we maybe just mention that to our C A O after the meeting and then we can just look at, you know, to see what that looks like. They're all, most cities are willing to share that information. No, you're all done. Go ahead.
Just since we're in a committee of all, I figure it's time to chat about these kind of things. And the comments about reducing the speed limits and that, I do agree that having them more cohesive where they're, you know, more or less the same as they go, so it's less of a speeding changes for drivers is helpful. But one thing also, last week, City of Vancouver, they looked, actually it was unanimous amongst their council, reduced all their speed down to 30 kilometers an hour or so. And, you know, I think there's some merit in that kind of conversation too, and seeing if it helps make some improvements to the pedestrian friendliness of the community and
Right. But but you just stole my thunder because I was going to talk about it in the transportation master plan. Thanks for giving me the lead. Thanks, Adam. Councillor Gore, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. My question to Teresa is about, well, first of all, the collaboration that you talked about. We as a city and council really enjoy working with PDBA. I think you brought a lot of positive change to our downtown. One other important member in that collaboration is the private business owners and the property owners when it comes to facade or the beautification of the buildings and whatnot. What has been the enthusiasm, if there is, in those property owners to the initiatives that you are looking forward to? I know we've seen a couple of murals go up in downtown and they've been well appreciated by the public. So what what steps are you taking to encourage those property owners to come on board? And what if anything we as council can do to encourage that?
Teresa.
It's all about that first one that sets the example. So what we need to do is is talk to the property owners, find somebody who's interested in in being that champion and work with them. I have had conversations with the C A O about what we could do to incentivize property owners for facade rejuvenation, and she's spoken with me about that. There are some examples that I've come across where what we offer right now at Parksville downtown is a very small amount for facade renewal and it's going to take a larger chunk of money to make to make money the incentive. We need more money. Are there other incentives? And those are the conversations we need to have one on one with the property owners. What do you need? How can we help? Can can you be our champion and do this and set the example for others to see and go, oh, I could do something like that? Because that mural that the first one that went up has sparked so many ideas of murals that I would hazard a guess this time next year, you will see a lot of murals, just just because one business person took that step. So that's what that's what we need. We need those business owners, property owners to step up and take that step.
Good news. Follow up, councillor Gore. Thank you. Councillor Beale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through to Teresa. Teresa, one thing I'm wondering about is, is there a role that social media and P R programs can can contribute to to the work that you're trying to do in the downtown area? And is this something that that is a part of that reimagined downtown?
In part of the past year and a half, while I've been writing the grant to do this work and then working closely with the consultant, I've been going to a lot of conferences and talking with other communities about how they moved a project forward like this. And you know, we can't just look at the businesses in that are in the downtown right now. We need to be able to recruit new businesses. We need to be able to make ourselves known beyond the city limits of Parksville. And that will mean a higher social media, maybe even some advertising to let people know, to borrow a phrase from Chilliwack, that we're open for business.
Thank you. Follow up, councillor Beale, are you okay? Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council or comments? Councillor Grentz, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to Teresa. I do want to make one more comment, just when we're looking at our current situation, I think we can actually celebrate the fact that our downtown actually has a significant proportion of non-franchise, kind of ma and pa, unique things, which in absent any specific policy around that, I think it's pretty exciting to see that, that we have very unique things happening in the downtown. And it's definitely And it's definitely something that we can build off of, I think. In terms of kind of developing that unique character that that I think it kind of needs to start in one concentrated spot, and I think that's what you're saying in the report as well. So whether it's coming out of Memorial Plaza or, you know, Craig Street or whatever needs to be. Okay, this is where we have to get everyone on board on this street to get with it and and be the showcase for where we can go in the future.
That was actually a recommendation by our consultant as well. Don't don't try to do one over here and one over here. Let's let's show what it could look like in a in a area and let that be the the lead.
Thank you. I'm going to now, Teresa, if you'd just stay there, I just see we have our roving mic is available. So those people in the audience. Anyone in the audience that would like to comment, question, or whatever on regarding the Imagine Parksville Downtown presentation? Please put up your hands and one of our staff will come by and with the microphone and you can, hi Ralph, yeah, see you out there. Go ahead.
Thank you, Teresa. With Access Oceanside, as you're aware, we're conducting right now a business accessibility survey for, starting with downtown Parksville. We're excited to work with you and your team. Accessibility is a way to welcome everybody into the businesses. We're trying to encourage businesses to think along those lines and making their businesses more accessible. The biggest thing is, again, money. Because to make a door accessible with an automatic door opener can be anywhere from three to ten thousand dollars, significant investment for a business. So in terms of the beautification project, I think it might be useful if we work together on that and tried to tie not just beautification, but also look at beautification and functionality slash accessibility and see if maybe there aren't some grant opportunities out there where the two could come together and energize on both sides of that project. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? On Imagine Downtown? Going once, going twice? Okay, well, thank you so much, folks, for for attending, as well as Teresa. Very well done presentation, Teresa. You got us all excited now. Thank you so much. So that's great. So so council, we will be working through the detailed plans anyways for our bestseller summer reading program. Because when we get down to the our financial plan meetings in the fall and our work workload for twenty six, we'll be doing that in Fall twenty five. So we'll be looking at all of this and for getting some action items on the table so that we can further this along. So, thank you. Will be gone. We have the next staff report is manager of engineering regarding the acceptance of the Transportation Master Plan to accept the final Transportation Master Plan with consideration to comments contained within the report. And I welcome Ayla. If you could, Ayla, thank you for joining us today. And walk us through this T M P, as it's come to be known.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you to Mayor and Council for the opportunity to speak about the Transportation Master Plan. I'm hoping today to not go too much into detail on the actual plan and just encourage everyone to read it as much as they like. It's available on Let's Talk Parksville, and we're always available for any questions or comments that anybody has along the way, like the plan at this point is complete if accepted today, but we're always taking into consideration changing conditions, changing priorities, things that people are noticing in the public while they're using transportation. So it's not like it's a closed door. I wanted to say that this is the beginning of of using this plan. It's not something that's gonna sit on a shelf. It's something that's gonna be on our desks and referenced every time we're looking at a project in coordination with the the other master plans we have available. So the purpose for today's discussion is for council to accept the Transportation Master Plan in principle as a high level planning document to be considered in conjunction with other planning documents annually during the financial planning process. So we're encouraging these projects to be brought forward at the financial planning stage and with other projects. The engineering staff are facilitating the creation of a ten year capital plan, which will consider the recommended actions in this Transportation Master Plan and will help staff create an implementation plan that we'll bring to you for consideration. Cost estimates for construction will be considered as part of the annual financial planning process. So we're not drilling down into numbers in the plan, you may have noticed. That's partly because the the projects are not at a level of detail that it's helpful to cost them, but also because costs are a bit of a moving target right now. And it depends on how much we can kind of bundle projects together and get that efficiency. These slides may look familiar. These are the projects that we have currently on the go, and the the projects with the asterisks are the projects that are supported and informed by the Transportation Master Plan. I wanted to specifically mention the Parksville Pathway Project. That was a comment that I saw just on the Let's Talk Parksville over the last two weeks as as a comment from the public on the Transportation Master Plan, just saying how much they would enjoy that trail to be formalized. So that and the other projects we have on this list are projects that we heard about a lot in the public engagement process. So that's why they're currently underway. We also have some smaller projects like the installation of the rapid rectangular flashing beacons or R F Bs on existing crosswalks and new crosswalk installations and bus stop improvements. Those are all on our radar for this year as well, and they are supported by the Transportation Master Plan. Without getting into too much detail within the Transportation Master Plan, we are just working with B C Transit to get their all their ridership information for the City of Parksville. We just got that data. So we're looking forward to digging into that and seeing where some improvements to a bus stop might be warranted. These slides also probably look very familiar to you. This is a project that we have underway, the design of the pedestrian and active transportation improvements along Alberni Highway between Lee and Stanford. And I just wanted to update you that we do have some funding in place from I C B C on on this one. They're considering all of these projects. I've already been working with them since earlier this year. We have Jensen Avenue West in design as well. And that will include some active transportation improvements and some lighting improvements. And Stanford Avenue East as well. And that was a comment that I noticed on the Let's Talk Parksville specifically. A just a comment about Stanford Avenue and its accessibility for walking and cycling. So that's something that we would like to take into consideration while we're working with the consultant on the design. So I'd like to talk about how the Transportation Master Plan will be used. We wanted to make it clear that the plan cannot compel council to spend money on a certain project or any or all projects, and they're going to be brought forward for consideration at each financial planning stage of the year. So we will be like looking at what projects make sense to do altogether. When we look at all of our utility master plan and all of those renewals we'll have to do for underground works and then seeing like what does the Transportation Master Plan say for what should be over top of all of those utilities? So this is a community driven document with quite a significant amount of public engagement behind it. We'll also use it. We'll use it for the like the public engagement portion and and hearing what people said, we can always look at the engagement summary to review those comments and what people are noticing. And then we also have in the Transportation Master Plan, a list of potential funding partners and potential grant funding. That would be something I would look at on a regular basis, just to see if some of those grants could be applied for, depending on staffing resources. I know they take a lot of work as well. And I would also be looking for what we call the guiding words in the Transportation Master Plan. Out of the public engagement, as a bit of a summary, there was, there were four kind of key words that came out of that, and they were active, balanced, safe, and accessible. Those were the four kind of guiding principles that the document was created around. And balanced, I think, is one that's interesting. There was just a lot of a sentiment that we balance all modes of transportation, including vehicles and in parking and including cycling, walking, and mobility devices and people who are using other devices to get around, whatever they may be. Active as well was coming through a lot with a lot of recreational active transportation throughout the city streets. Safe was a key word that we heard again and again and again. Of course, I think that's common to many, many transportation master plans. People feel very strongly about the safety of roads for obvious reasons. And accessible came up a lot as well because we have so many different road users in this town. And we want to be able to accommodate all of those. I will also say that this isn't something that I planned, but I thank you to the P D B A for their presentation. And the parking and circulation study that's recommended in as a recommended action in the Transportation Master Plan. It it is on our list to bring forward for consideration, but what I would say is parking and transportation in general is is a very, very emotional subject, and people feel very strongly about it. So it's always hard to make change because somebody's going to be unhappy about it usually, but I think that there's a lot of opportunity to to get some data about what we're seeing out there and just kind of what makes sense for the next steps. So again, I got into these words ahead of time, but these are the four words that that kind of guided us through the process. And one comment that I or some of the comments I saw on Let's Talk Parksville for the Transportation Master Plan were at a level of detail that this plan wouldn't wouldn't really look at. I just wanted to mention that those those comments are still something we would consider once we get into the design on these projects, so that once we get to the detail level, those are those are valuable opinions and comments. I also wanted to say a huge thank you to the community and to many of the organizations that have been helping us with this plan. We had over a thousand responses to the surveys that we put out over the three different surveys, and we had hundreds of people attending our engagement events, and we received many comments along the way as we always do, and we considered those and added those into the plan. So I think that this plan will allow us to will will serve as a checkpoint for the community concerns and desires for years to come. In particular, I wanted to thank, this is alphabetical orders, there's no particular order to these folks, but the Access Oceanside Association, the B C Ambulance Service, I C B C, Island Health, Oceanside Community Safety Volunteers, Oceanside R C M P, Parksville and District Chamber of Commerce, Parksville Downtown Business Association, Parksville Fire Rescue, Parksville Colacum Beach Tourism Association, R D N Transit, and School District sixty nine specifically participated and provided valuable valuable input into the process. So thank you to the community and all of those organizations that came forward to their input into this plan. So the conclusion I would like to bring to you today is that this document will serve as a high level planning document to guide staff and decision makers in prioritizing the recommended actions. The robust public engagement is intended to serve as a strong foundation for the consideration of recommended projects each year. The T M P will be considered in the creation of an implementation plan. And staff will bring recommended actions forward to council as considerations during the annual financial planning process. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Thank you so so much, Ayla, for your your comments, and I appreciate that. And the consultation process was vast. It was very well received, and I I commend you and your team for making sure and the McElhenney team as well for making sure that that happened. I attended most of them anyways to just got to get a feel for from the room just by walking about. And it was pretty prevalent that there's a lot of people here. I will comment that there was a lot of people that don't necessarily live in the City of Parksville that were very adamant that their viewpoint should be considered and and very often it was like don't take away our highway. And and in the meantime, they don't live in Parksville. But so that was okay. And that's the way it goes. But in my position anyways, I I heard some common words too. So a lot of people phoned me and emailed me and so forth because they said the comments to the consultant, but they they want to make sure I heard them too. And and that's okay. And that's what I'm here for. But at the same time, you're talking about regular words, common words. The words that came to me more often than anything was traffic calming. It was traffic calming through people's neighborhoods that they don't don't like people that actually you will use their road as a cut through, you know, to save three minutes on their journey to wherever they're going. So they were saying we have to slow that down as well as using the highway as a cut through to get to other businesses, say, perhaps in Naimo or golf courses north in Qualicum using our so but and they didn't want to miss their tee off time, so they have a tendency to drive at the full fifty kilometers an hour right through a city and try and make every light, which there aren't many, but maybe that will change. But keeping that in mind, that the the individuals that were were commenting said over and over again about for every ten kilometers of speed that's lessened on their terios and the connectors and so forth, the amount of fatal or serious injury to pedestrian and bicycle riders drops exponentially. It's huge to drop those down on the adverse. Of course, when they're up to fifty kilometers an hour, it's amazing how many more serious fatalities we have on our roads. And so as Counselor Fraz mentioned as well, City of Vancouver has recently implemented a a new program where they're dropping the speed limits down from their neighborhood roads and so forth, from fifty down to forty. City of Park or City of Victoria is also doing the same. It's the timing, you know, reading the T C on the weekend. They just announced as well that they are adding to their list. And so they have a plan to reduce the plan. There will be no fifty kilometers an hour in either city, in Victoria in particular. In Victoria, I can qualify that by saying in the corridor, Douglas Street, basically, I think it's from Caledonia down to Belleville will no longer be fifty. It'd be down to forty. And then their residential roadside, they're considering to go down to thirty. So very, very active investigation into lowering our speeds, I think, is essential. And I realize that it's one thing to put up signs, but the other thing that came to mind was the fact of increasing the amount. One of your keywords was safety. Safety and accessible. One of the key factors in making our streets safer are the advent of the new rap flashing beacons, R F Bs, which we love because they can be solar activated, so they don't take half the costs as it took with the old push button ones and so forth. So the R F Bs, wherever they're introduced to make safe pedestrian and accessible crossings have that same tendency of calming the traffic and making it safe. And so it's 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 double and as well as being supported by I C B C in many cases for the cost of actually installing the R F Bs. So that to me, to please many of the people in our area, I think, would be a good priority to look at. I know we're going to be talking about this in our financial plan to identify those locations, but recognizing that, yes, I'd like to, you know, shut the highway down and turn it into one lane both ways and put parking that we so needed, you know, all along the the park. However, I think the with the first step should be get the R F Bs working and make a huge crossing to get down to the community park. And also perhaps renaming of our infamous highways. Nineteen A really doesn't do much for us as a seaside town. You know, we've had lots of, when I came in today, had lots of thoughts anyways, whether it's Ocean Boulevard or Oceanside Boulevard or whatever it is, anything but highway. And so I I think it would do a lot to attract businesses to the businesses that are on that on nineteen A and as well as renaming Alberni Highway. So I I I'm not sure that I saw that loud and clear in the T M P. And I think that we should be maybe considering that as part of the symbolically, if you take the highway out of the naming of that, then maybe you shouldn't be driving highway speeds. So I think that that's a that's a good first step that we have to look at. And relative, it doesn't take a lot of pavement, and I'm saying the costs are relatively low as compared to a major highway project. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much, Ayla. I'm going to open the floor to council now. Counsel, any comments to Ayla on the T M P? Oh, come on, give us a comment, someone, you guys, come on. What would you like to see in the T M P? There you go, Mary. Thanks for coming to the rescue. Counselor Bill, go ahead.
Pardon me, a bit slow on the.
Pardon me, a bit slow on the on the keyboard there. Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and through to uh Ayla, our our manager of engineering. Thank you very much for uh for your presentation. There are many takeaways and I appreciate that you explained more than once, and it's also in the write-up somewhere that this is high level and also that accepting this master plan does not mean that we are obliged to implement uh any or every item that's in there. I really appreciate that. I also really want to thank um, thank you and our consultants for the what we heard, for the gathering of community uh input. Uh, I really, I have in fact in front of me, uh, since I'm not there personally, I I printed out everything today, but not the whole plan, but I certainly printed out what we heard. Report number three, and I was really encouraged by by the many thoughtful comments that that people did make and and what people would like to see and uh, you know, particularly around safety and slowing things down and Mr. Mayor, I I agree wholeheartedly with very much um much of what you have to say about what we can do to improve safety and also comfort of uh people living in neighborhoods uh when we address some of the traffic there. So thank you very much, Ayla. I look forward to reading and rereading the the document and look forward to thoughts about implementation. And also congratulations on getting some funding from I C B C for the sidewalk um connecting Lee Road all the way down up to uh hang on, I'm going the wrong way. But anyway, from Dunbar all the way down or Lee all the way down or up to uh Dunbar and basically connecting Despard. That will be such a great improvement for for so many people. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. Um, I, yeah.
Go ahead.
I'd like to echo that. Thank you to McElhenney. I was going to end uh with that. Thought as well, they did uh many, like several years of work on on this project. And um Matthew Browning, the the consultant that we were specifically working with, did work with us from the beginning of the project to the end. I jumped in in the middle, so I was really grateful for all of the continuity that he brought to the project and all of the expertise, obviously. And their team there was really responsive and um we were happy to work with with them. Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Bill. Uh, Counsel Gore, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll start off slightly off topic. I want to thank Ayla for all the engineering reports that come to council. I really enjoy reading them. Uh, because I've seen your naval reports. That's why I wanted to mention that.
Um, thank you.
So about the transportation master plan, my question is about the active part that you mentioned. So active transportation, whether it's cycling or walking. Um, a lot of people have mentioned about the Jensen walkway as well as the Maple Glen walkway. My question is, is staff uh looking at not only preserving those features, but also looking at perhaps adding more such walkways uh where they connect to these parks where people can walk uh and enjoy. I know both of those walkways are very well utilized in the community and people appreciate those. Uh, I have walked on both of them. I really enjoy that part of Parksville where you can just walk uh with nature on either side, lots lots of trees. So is staff looking at perhaps more opportunities like this in the city to have those little connector walkways?
Uh, thank you for your questions. Yes. And your experiences with the pathways that we have, we I'll just answer about the Maple Glen and Jensen Avenue. We did hear a lot in the public engagement on those two trails. So those are all comments that we're considering just from an operational standpoint and working with our Parks Department as well to um make sure that those trails are functioning as well as they can be. And then as far as trails that we're working on, I think the Parksville Pathway Project is is the key project that is another trail um that that is in design right now. We're working with the provincial and federal governments on all of the required environmental permitting, but I would say also that the transportation master plan unfortunately, well, fortunately, I guess it focuses on more of the roads right of way. And um a lot of those kind of trail opportunities have already kind of been built out, but maybe a like a Parks and Trails master plan or something similar to like that might speak more to um the pedestrian trails. And um that would be something we would kind of coordinate with the transportation master plan. Does does that answer your question? Thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel Gore.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, another question and then I will be done for this. Uh what I feel is missed in the transportation master plan is anything about the Wembley area, Wembley Mall. Uh, we here as council and even if you walk uh, you know, along along Wembley or Church Road, uh, safety is a big issue um with either with the speed and also just the amount of traffic. Um, is is that not something that the staff is looking at to perhaps um address those concerns that the community members have?
Thank you for your question. As far as um, I don't know if you're referring specifically to changes that are happening in the Wembley Mall area. Um, but I would say that the transportation master plan use the projected um pop population increases in the official community plan and based their modeling on on that. So we did model that growth there and those changes there as far as the transportation network is concerned. Um, and then what came out of it was the projects that you see in the transportation master plan. As far as um concerns from the community about how things are functioning, that's something that we're always receptive to hearing and we would always kind of consider whenever we're making changes in a certain area. Sometimes we'll collect traffic data with our covert counter that that nobody can see, so it doesn't change driver behavior. And uh, collect other types of data to kind of assess if there's changes we can make. And I always like to say there's the three E's of of transportation or traffic calming. It's uh education, enforcement and engineering. So engineering is a part of that is an expensive part of it because it's engineered uh changes to the road, but um all three pieces have a part to play and I look forward to, yeah, continuing to try to balance all all three of those as we move forward.
Follow up, Counsel Gore. Okay, done. Thank you. Any other first time speakers? I would just like to take this opportunity also to mention to the public anyways, our our staff have recently met with Ministry of Transportation. And we uh regarding uh areas slightly outside of Parksville but connecting Parksville, so to speak, and this uh regarding at uh Raftrevor Road uh connection and Resort Drive. You may have noticed that um there's is uh talked about safety and accessibility and and traffic calming needed uh in that area for the safety of our residents and visitors. So the first phase is now completed of that connector, which is from Resort Drive that goes down to what we call the mailboxes at the end of the slingshot lane that used to be there. Uh, so that has been uh already converted anyways with a safe uh pathway that goes down. Uh, we've met with uh transportation officials just last week who confirmed that the next phase will be uh applied in will be completed in twenty twenty-six. And that will be to connect from the mailboxes where those chickens hang out, you know, that that's kind of cool. But uh, right where the chickens hang out, all the way from there down to the Orange Bridge, uh, running along Plumber Road, uh, it that will take uh a proper pedestrian and active transportation route that will connect up and decrease the grade getting up to the Orange Bridge. And then the Orange Bridge will take you into the lovely seaside town of Parksville, uh, where you'll once again be uh corralled or actually hopefully use the safe and commerce streets once you get inside Parksville. But that's going to eliminate one very large uh dangerous uh area. And uh, thank you so much for our team uh in engineering, Ayla, for your help and on providing all the assistance to the Ministry of Transportation. I know it's invaluable and you were the ones that after probably twenty years of asking, you made it happen. So I I'm I'm very impressed and thankful and grateful for what you've done. So thank you for that. Counsel Martin, you had your hand up?
I was just gonna say uh thank you and we needed this for a start. And it will be something that we can work with and appreciate that. And there's a lot of things even the mayor has brought up, but no, I'm 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 afraid for people. I want to make sure people are safe. That is the most important thing. And particularly this time of year, there's everyone's out, can see them, they're like sitting ducks, you know, children and their families and all that. And then we have to be careful with the bikes and this sort of thing, uh, where they would go from the Orange Bridge into Parksville, where are they going to go? So all this is very important. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from counsel? Counsel Grins, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through to you to our manager of engineering. Uh, Ms. DeFour, thank you so much for your presentation um and uh all the work you've done on this uh T M P. Um, I'm particularly interested in the um proposal around a trial or test run sort of thing for nineteen A. Um, do you have any thoughts on potential timing or how that could get rolled out if that were to be um, one of the sort of next steps that we might try out?
Right. Yeah. Um, from my understanding, it's something that would be considered uh during the financial planning process in the fall. Uh, if that's a project that uh is really of interest to council, then that would be something we would definitely consider for next year, I guess. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I should recognize that you did mention that this is all has to be funded still, and so we will be uh looking through these items and funding them um as as uh with council and staff collaboration on that. Um the uh, just to follow up on a couple of things Counselor Gore raised. Um, one is the the trails uh piece. Um, it's exciting to see that the regional district is actually working on some projects on that that I know that you're uh in contact and working together on. So exciting to see some of that. That'll be coming uh along. Um but on the the Wembley Mall, uh, can you speak at all to how it works for collaboration with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure and the regional district? Because that's such an awkward jurisdictional area there, um, where obviously Parksville has in i- i- in our plan that that's a node um in the city, but it's also abuts the regional district and they have their plans there and Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure has their plans. Is there any kind of fill in on that one?
Yeah, thank you for your question very much. Um, I I think I don't maybe have the best answer to this, but I know Blaine and I uh do coordinate a lot with the R D N on um kind of the changes and developments that they're working on just on our borders there. And I think there's a lot of room for ongoing cooperation and I and we're totally open to it. And anytime they want a meeting, I'm I'm available. Uh, as far as collaborating, like I think for the plan, all we can do is speak to um what we can do in our in our city limits. So it was a little bit of a balancing act, just trying not to over promise uh what the R D N might do uh versus what we can are within our power to do. Um so, yeah, it maybe not the best answer, but definitely open to collaborating with them and we're in communications with them on on several um possible developments that they've been talking about and uh other changes to like their road rights of way between, for example, like Church and Wembley. Um that's something that I would continue to to support. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none. I open it up to the floor. Any comments from anybody in the audience? Comments or questions? Uh, just put up your hand and our roving mic will find its way to you. Hi, Ralph. See ya. On the way.
Um, I also want to thank the the uh consultant that we worked with, McElhenney. They were very accommodating and enthusiastic about our concerns about accessibility and the pedestrian network and etcetera. So we want to say thank you for everything in there and that we're very excited that some of these projects are already underway. So that's really good news. I am just going to now go to Ralph Moen. I'm going to separate myself from Access Oceanside. And uh, just want to throw something out there. And it ties a little bit into the Imagine Parksville. I'm just going to say two words, Orange Bridge. Could it not become a rainbow bridge? Just throwing it out there as a wow effect coming into Parksville instead of a dirty old orange bridge, a spectacular rainbow bridge. And we're talking paint. That's it.
Thank you for your question. I I don't think I have the authority to speak on that, but I like the idea.
Thanks, Ralph, for this suggestion. Uh, I I I remember a previous council tried very hard to have the Orange Bridge repainted. And uh, yeah, that went about as far as the new connector from Raftrevor Road to the Orange Bridge. So, yeah, it's it's a bit of a process. I understand um uh Caution just recently went through the uh reconfiguration of their bridge as to the city of Courtney. And it was long and involved and very expensive, apparently. So um I appreciate your thoughts, maybe maybe some chalk or something around it, you know, in the meantime to kind of like, I don't I I didn't just, I I didn't suggest graffiti, but you know, maybe. But anyhow, thank you for your suggestion, Ralph. Anybody else from the audience that I'd like to speak about the T M P? No, then I I will thank you very much for your presentation, Ayla. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to ask for a mover and a second or further recommendations as noted in your package, counsel. If I could have a mover on that, please. Uh, moved by Counsel Grins, seconded by Counsel Fraz. Any further discussion?
I'd like to add a big thank you to the parcel engineering team too, that everybody had a hand in this and looked at it and proofread it and went through it and and they had a lot to do with this as well. That's all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries you unanimous, counsel. Thank you so much. Thanks again, Ayla. And thank you in the audience for those that attended uh this exciting uh committee of the whole meeting. It's been enlightening, if nothing else. Uh, I'm going to ask for adjournment from the committee at the hall. Could I have a mover and a seconder for that? Uh, adjourning committee hall, uh, Counsel Martin moved by, seconded by Counsel Grins. All those in favor? Thank you. We're now out of committee of the hall. I already opened prematurely as our regular meeting. We're back to our regular meeting. So I won't uh bore you with that part all over again. Uh, we got through the consent agenda. And now we're working on to our reports. I'll just wait for the audience members to leave. Who wants to leave? Thank you. Um, the first report on the agenda is from the Director of Community Planning and Building, the follow-up report. The zoning amendment at one three zero Lee Avenue. For further consideration of a zoning and development by law amendment. Do I have a mover or second or further recommendations as noted? Moved by Counsel Gore, seconded by Counsel Fraz. Any comments or discussion? Uh, did did Mary's hand go up? No? I, oh, Counsel Martin, go ahead.
I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, if this is the right time. I was looking at this and the are we going to have more of an explanation of the design and everything? I don't know if this is the right time. My thought was with buildings and and changing of the um community, like the 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 neighborhood. I wanted to suggest that windows and all those things be considered. Is this the right time?
That will happen at the uh building permit stage, the development permit stage. This is just uh merely the zoning amendment at the Lee Avenue. There was some conceptual that came with that presentation, and I remember. But it was strictly conceptual at that time, but I think there'll be times for us to uh choose an off ramp to discuss that further. Whereas it uh goes further along in the plan, um, I may bounce back to our director of planning, uh, Mr. Russell, to confirm if that correct.
If I may, Mayor, yeah, at this point in time, it's it's the land use itself that's being considered. Um, this property is in a development permit area and at this time, uh this could come back to council as a development permit.
Thank you. Yes, that was, yeah, thank you. Any other comments regarding this? Counsel Gore, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, just a quick uh comment on following what uh Counsel Martin said. Yeah, I I I recognize that this is surrounded by single family homes and we read a comment from somebody in the neighborhood. So yeah, I'm looking forward to the D P stage uh where some landscaping uh and all those things are taken care of. So the privacy of the neighbors is respected. Um, overall, I think the design looks looks good and the land use that is being suggested. I'm I support that. Uh, I'm looking forward to uh seeing this project go forward. And uh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you. The next report on the agenda is from the Director of Community Planning and Building regarding the development permit application at ten twenty Haringdale Way. To consider issuance of a development permit. Do I have a mover, second or further recommendations as noted? Moved by Counselor Fraz, seconded by Counselor Gore. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Next report on the agenda, also from the Director of Community Planning and Building regarding the license of occupation with Realm Food Company for a street patio. For license of occupation agreement for a street patio outside Realm Food. Do I have a mover, second or further recommendation? Moved by Counselor Fraz, seconded by Counselor Wood. Any comments? Go ahead, Counselor Fraz.
Yeah, thank you. This I'm excited to see that this comes forward after the work we've done with. Our staff here for on-street patios and while I recognize that this does cut into the parking space on the street here. I think the vibrancy it allows and especially for the summertime and that area, I think it's going to be quite a great addition for the community and. I'm looking forward to seeing how it's embraced. So yeah, I'm happy to see this coming forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Grins, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe a question through to staff. Does this affect at all? The summer by the sea market at all and has that? Has the has the chamber been consulted or do they have any weighing on this?
I don't, I mean, it's going to occupy the space and it would be operating as a cafe, so I guess it would have the impact that a cafe would have on the on the market.
Follow up, Counselor Grins.
Yeah, I guess maybe just my comments is I'm also excited to see this quickly, someone else coming along and wanting to do take advantage of this new bylaw. I guess it's just thinking remind, I haven't talked to the chamber either. There's a new executive director there and I haven't actually met her yet. But it hopefully wouldn't really affect their ability to host the market, especially if we start seeing these bump outs kind of happening more. I don't know whether. Really to maybe one other business that might want to do that on that street, but. But maybe. In some ways, it's almost like they'd get a free submission into the market there if they are kind of taking that booth. So I kind of feel like maybe they they might want to say something about that or whether if they consider that spot to be something they're renting out already. So I don't know if there's further comment from staff on that. That would be my hesitation around it. My other hesitation is, as I previously commented, is the. To me, the price seems a bit low for what we're charging for the parking spots. If if we're looking to lease, say, the library space at seventeen dollars per square foot. A parking spot at that same rate would be significantly higher than what we're. And which I'm fine with because of the vibrancy that it would bring, but I. I think the comparison should be more what it would cost to lease that space versus. What a parking spot is worth, so to speak. So I don't know if staff has any additional comments on that or but those are my thoughts.
I was just good with a quick comment. I was at the Tuesday night market just this last week anyways, and. They actually had empty spots, you know, that they weren't totally sold out anyways. And all that it would do is just the two spots perhaps that would be taken up by a canopy, you know, would just have to move one way, you know, further. North or south from that spot. Also point out the fact that the Chamber of Commerce do not rent that space from the city. It's provided free of charge. Of that. And so and the fact that in this particular case, Realm will be charged the fee as low as it is to. We wanted to make it attractive as a pilot project anyways to make it appealing. And I'm very pleased with the uptake on it. So I'm not sure that it would have any impact really on the the summer by the sea market. There's still plenty of space that they can expand into. Just my own comments. Go ahead, Mr. Russell, if you could.
If I may, Mayor, through to Counselor Grins, when this whole project was brought before council referrals were made to both the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Business Association. As well as the Tourism Association, we received comments back from two out of those three agencies. The Chamber Commerce did not respond. But we did certainly reach out to them, so they haven't indicated a concern, I would say, through not responding. And as I said, as the mayor has mentioned, it is a small portion of the street. There's still a huge street area. With respect to the fee, this was proposed as an introductory for this pilot period. Certainly, when the pilot period ends, it would be revisited in detail.
Thank you. Counselor Beal, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would just like to add my support for this. This proposal. I look forward to seeing that extra splash of color out along the street. I particularly enjoyed reading that they envisioned, pardon me, having some kind of barrier and umbrella. So I. I expect that it will add true life along the street and that will be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Gore, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. My comment is it's exciting to see more businesses taking up this opportunity. That our staff and P D B has been working on to add vibrancy to our downtown. I share Counselor Grins' concerns about the pricing because I did a little bit of math if. Sorry, one second.
Is he frozen or is he adding? There's a polar bear behind him. Are you there, Counselor Gore? Okay.
Sorry, there was some announcement. I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay.
I wanted to say that I share what Counselor Grins mentioned about the pricing. Even if we do the lower end of five dollars per square meters, we are even less of that what other cities are charging for this. And I understand this being a pilot and uncertain times, our business is struggling, so. I I think until we have a bylaw in place, we need to set a price per square meters. So there is a standard set until such time. So we're not looking at every application and trying to do the math for every. Parking space or every city on land. So. This is what I would I would like to see. I don't know if this is the time. I'm happy to make a motion if we set a price now for the per square meters of space that's being used. For these kind of initiatives. So there's there's certainty so people can can expect what they will be paying. The other thing is. How it would work with the Craig Street.
Sorry, sorry, if I may, Counselor Gore, we have an answer to that first question before you move on to your next one.
It was just a comment, it was just a comment, Mayor, that.
Mr. Russell can answer that first question for you. There you go. Mr. Russell.
If I may, Mayor, through to Counselor Gore, the dollar amount is exactly the same. As what was Extreme Eats when their application came before council. It's based on the the square meter of the space that they're occupying. And the calculation rate is exactly the same on a per square meter basis as what as what Eat Extreme Eats was presented to council. That information is being presented three meetings ago. We are attempting to be consistent with the direction that council provided when that information was available. And unless we have have other direction, that's that's what we're going to would continue to do.
And C A L, Kaler, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, just wanted to remind council as well that we did look at what other cities are charging. And there was a recommendation to be at fifty percent of that for the introductory rate, just given that it's a. A bit of a boost to try and encourage that type of vibrancy. And so that was presented in the initial report when. The zone was changed for the road to allow these to happen and not require a rezoning application every time.
Thank you. Counselor Gore, go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. So thank you, Mr. Russell and and Ms. Kaler for that information. I want to ask that nine, is it ninety five hundred, ninety eight hundred dollars per standard the space that's calculated? What year is this pricing based on? If staff can provide me that, the reason I'm asking is I want to make sure that we support the businesses. But also that we are at least able to recover the cost, whether it's admin cost or any of the staff time. Whether it's bylaw or anything else, operations that may be impacted by this.
If I may, through to.
Go ahead, Mr. Russell, if you would, sir.
Certainly, if I may, Mayor, through to Counselor Gore, the price is what if someone was coming in today with a private development and was looking to waive providing that parking space? The zoning bylaw has a provision in it that allows them to essentially purchase that space through cash and leave for that dollar amount. I don't know the exact date. It was when the when the zoning bylaw would have been amended to put that provision in. So that that has been a number of years. I would say it's probably twenty twenty years or so. So that would be a certainly a future project that the city could could look into. But you know, when we're looking at someone permanently forever not providing a space, it seems that for a temporary use. That that would be a good metric in the and again, the matter of fairness to all businesses. That they would be based on this on the same same kind of premise. So you know, if at such point in time, the city establishes a different rate. For for a permanent waiving of the parking requirements. Then then absolutely the the rate that someone would pay for a temporary space, it would make sense that it would be based on that as well.
Thank you.
If I could get the answer, yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. If I could get the answer that are we able to recover cost at least with the admin or whatever staff is involved with this?
Mayor, if I may, through to Counselor, if Mayor, if I may, through to Counselor Gore, you rarely recover costs.
Thank you. Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Referring to the last presentation by the P D B A. And the things that are wanting to do with the downtown core. This is a sort of thing. It's a small thing for starters to really improve things. And I mean, we have to. Be objective to a new a business experimenting with something, and this is a three-year window. And so I'm excited about this happening and where's it going to go? It certainly will have progress, I'm sure, but we have to test it. That's what it's about, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Counselor Beal, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yes, I would just like to add that there was a lot of discussion about costs and price rather. At a previous meeting when this bylaw was brought in and. So I certainly want to go with staff recommendation and I have every faith that that things will be applied consistently. I also have some trouble, more than a little trouble with comparing something like the rental, if you like, for a the parking space on the street. With something like proposed rent for the library, which is inside a building, using heat, using light and so on and so forth. So I I don't think that there are very easy comparisons considering the wear and tear. Setting up something like this along the street side as opposed to wear and tear inside a physical building that we might own.
Okay, thank you. Good discussion, folks. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you. The next report on the agenda is for the Manager of Finance regarding transfers from the unrestricted surplus to reserves. To recommend transfers from twenty twenty four unrestricted surplus to the reserve. Do I have a mover and a seconder for the? For the, sorry, do I have a mover or seconder for the third recommendation? Is that correct? Yeah, okay, my cheat sheets are not quite right. Do I have a mover and a seconder for the following recommendations, one, two, and three? Move in a second or please. Move by Counselor Gore, seconded by Counselor Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That carries unanimously. The next report on the agenda is for the Manager of Administration Services regarding the Vancouver Island Regional Library Lease Renewal. To request council approval of a lease agreement between the city and library in the Parksville Civic and Technology Center. Do I have a mover or seconder for the recommendation as noted? Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Wood. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Counselor Beal, I did not see a vote. Counselor Beal, oh, you're frozen. Okay, I'm going to wait now. I got to call the question again, Counselor Beal, you're freed up now. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries unanimously. We have bylaws for the final adoption, the Business License Amendment Bylaw twenty twenty five, number fifteen fifty point two. Before I move for a mover or seconder, is there anyone in the gallery who wish to provide comment to council on the proposed amendment bylaw? No one online this weeks? Okay, thank you. Do I have a mover and seconder for the recommendation as noted? Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Grins. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. Are you unanimous? Bylaws for final adoption, the Property Maintenance Amendment Bylaw twenty twenty five, number thirteen eighty three point three. For housekeeping amendments for the addition of sections on improperly stored materials and vacant abandoned buildings. Do I have a mover or a second or further recommendation? Moved by Counselor Gore, seconded by Counselor Grins. Any discussion? All those in favor? Counselor Beal, there's a little delay with Counselor Beal. Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you. Bylaws for final adoption, the Traffic Amendment Bylaw twenty twenty five, number one four three six point four. Regarding addition of section on unauthorized traffic control. Move in a second or further recommendations, please. Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. Under bylaws for final adoption, Bylaw Offense Notice Enforcement Amendment Bylaw twenty twenty five, number one four eight six point one three. For increase in escalating fines. Do I have a mover or a second or further recommendation? Moved by Counselor Gore, seconded by Counselor Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you. And bylaws for final adoption for the fees and charges Amendment Bylaw twenty twenty five, number one five one five point six. Do I have a mover or a second or further recommendation? Moves by. Counselor Fraz, seconded by Counselor Grins. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. There's the unanimous. Council, is there any notices of motion at this time? Anyone wants to present? Seeing none. We'll move on to liaison reports. We have liaison reports from Counselor Martin. Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to mention that I was at the Mabry event for climate change. And so I'm just going to read this. Recently attended a climate change forum with sixteen community representatives, Qualicum Beach. Council R D N Planner, Qualicum First Nations, Mosaic Forest Products and V I U. Also included were several community representatives. From my perspective, it is good these discussions are happening where helpful solutions will come forward. It wasn't too many years ago, we did not have blue boxes, for example, and they came out. We remember that. Also, many years ago, it was stated that we need to use seat belts in the car. Now we have them permanently. So what's happening here are the people are brought together to discuss about climate change and what can be done. I know conclusions have happened. It's more putting forward thoughts about what will be helpful in the future. So. It was very interesting to our forum, really, to all of us. The Parksville Historical Museum Society. What is interesting is the it was wonderful. I. I was at their meeting last week and the board members were able to help at the Sank House. It's board members and volunteers. And they will be getting a share of the donations at the gate because they were there. And I've heard of this before, but I don't know how easy it is to get on the list, but there's quite a few. And I've heard of this before, but I I don't know how easy it is to get on the list, but there's quite a few of them. I've talked to a neighbor today who was there herself and really I found it very worthwhile. Also, the music series, I have these little notices if anyone wants them. They're, they have the next two Thursdays. And and it's good for everybody. These music series are incredible. I mean, the last two I've heard, because I wasn't there, I'm going this Thursday, there was over two hundred people. And people really take it in. They really enjoy it. So I think and there's also been a patron who has given us donated funds because they donate to music to enhance the staging. It's all very different than a regular museum in my mind, because I've been to museums all over. And so this is significant. And Railway Days, which we've had for years is on August twenty fourth, because we're not having a council meeting before then. I thought I'd mentioned that. The Coralon, it's called, has Oh Canada every night at seven o'clock. Music every night at seven o'clock. It's got Oh Canada going. So that's kind of significant. And there's many weddings. I think there's eight this year in the church. There's fundraiser going for the church improvements. And they're open every day from ten till five, except Tuesday and Wednesday. Unfortunately, they don't have the funds to be able to stay open all the time. And we're talking about that today, about the businesses and the vibrancy, you know. I know it's not downtown, but it is a wonderful museum. I think that they participated with the fire truck in the Canada Day Parade. They do everything they can. This board is chaired by Nancy Martin, who worked with the government of Saskatchewan on the museums. She's the president. So I think we're privileged actually to have people like this on their board. So those are my two reports. Very busy time. Yeah.
Thank you, Carter.
If anyone wants me these, yeah.
Thank you for councillor Martin for that. And I can attest to the fact that I hear the Oh Canada from where I live.
Do you?
Which, yes, I can hear hear it on the carolong. And yeah, it always brings a smile to my face, actually, when I do hear it. And I also have to attest the fact that the museum, the the venue for hearing music in the evening is just amazing. They've done a lot of work for for that area. And it's just a great place to be on a on a summer evening and they do a really good job. They have very high quality musicians that perform there. So I highly recommend it. It's it's a great venue. And there's a food truck. Last time I was there, they had a pizza truck there and that was, we took advantage of that. And am I correct in saying, do they not have licensed sales as well?
Yes, they do. Yeah.
Oh, good. I wasn't breaking the law.
No.
Yes, yes, that's right. It's available at the museum. Thank you. And for further information, you can go on their website or councillor Martin has those pamphlets with her. Thanks for the liaison reports.
There's one more thing. I I'm, it's not really on my liaison report, but I went to the open house on on the for the big, big dig that's going on on the Resort Way. I went to the open house and it was really something. I thought they were excellent and my husband was impressed with the two hundred parking stalls. Two hundred. Wow, that is really something. So I just thought I'd mention that. I was there.
That that's quite the sight. Yeah, I've never seen a construction project advance so quickly. That's it's amazing. Yes, it's great job. Any other liaison reports that I do not have a list on that anyone wants to speak of at this time, council? Seeing none. Thank you all. Do I have a mover or a second or further recommendation that we move into in camera under special business pursuant to section ninety-one E J K and M of the community charter, council proceed to close meeting to consider items relating to land, information that is prohibited, or information that if were presented in a document would be prohibited from disclosure under section twenty-one of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provision of a municipal service and a matter that under another enactment is such that the public may be excluded from the meeting. Now, a mover or a second or for such? Moved by councillor Wood, seconded by councillor Gore. Any comments? All those in favor? Or any comments first and all those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you.